Mayor Protambles?
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming?
Here.
Councilman Muir?
Here.
Councilor Robach?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Grassley?
I am here, thank you. The invocation and pledge of allegiance this evening will be led by Councilman Muir. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Lord, make us an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let us bring love. Where there is offense, let us bring pardon. Where there is discord, let us bring union. Where there is error, let us bring truth. Where there is doubt, let us bring faith. Where there is despair, let us bring hope. Where there is darkness, let us bring your light. Where there is sadness, let us bring joy. Let us not seek so much to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is the giving that we receive, and it is in self-forgetting that we find. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up this evening is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go right into our presentation, which is from the Madison Heights Community Coalition.
We are having some technical difficulties with the coming up on the screen. I'm not sure what is happening. So if you guys want to do it.
Leave without all our computers.
We could do the consent agenda first and come back to you if you want.
That would be nice. They work tight on the consent. I would appreciate that.
Okay, we will move off then. So, all right, so we have, for the consent agenda, we have six items. We have the 2025 Old or Michiganian Day Resolution, the Historical Commission updated park facility naming policy from the Director of Public Services, the 2025 Drinking Water Week proclamation, and we've got from the City Clerk, Professional Municipal Clerk's Week proclamation, also Kevin Song Charitable Gaming License Resolution, and then we've got the approval of the regular meeting minutes from last meeting, which was April 15th. So can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Mr. Muir?
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I don't see no. Motion carries. And to the representative from Kevin Song, it has passed. So thank you for coming out this evening and good luck with everything you're doing. Thank you for what you're doing. All right, we still waiting? Okay. So I'm going to open it to meeting open to the public. So this is, oh, can I do that? Okay.
I can move.
Okay, then I'm going to open meeting to the public. Thank you all for being here while we deal with technical difficulties. I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, give your name, address, any affiliation with the city, address your comments to me. And with that, please go ahead.
Martha Covert, Edward Avenue. I want to thank Melissa Marsh for the wonderful job that our city has, to me, has been doing lately, especially our water department. We had a huge plumbing issue. They literally had to come up to my house, turn the water off, and the, I'm sorry, I don't remember his name, the supervisor, gave my husband his phone number and said, when you need to turn back on, call us. These gentlemen came out, I think it was like seven o'clock at night, to turn my water back on. They were pleasant, they were professional. It was like, this is the service that you're getting for our city, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening in public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Joe Raich, I'm the City Manager in Claussen. I'm here to support your City Manager Melissa Marsh and her resolution to reject the rate increase from the county. She's leading the way as far as potentially establishing a consortium to leverage the county and put them back to the drawing board. So I encourage your support in her resolution. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If he was going to talk, I was going to be really impressed.
All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening during public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and I'm going to guess that we're still waiting.
Yes, the laptop is not connecting, so I'm trying to get a new laptop ready to go.
Okay, so we do have one other item on the agenda, that I guess we will just move to that item now. So, next item is reports. It's from the City Manager, it's what the Claussen City Manager just alluded to. It's a resolution urging Oakland County Board of Commissioners to reject the proposed increase in equalization service costs to local communities.
So this item is to request City Council's consideration of a resolution tonight urging the Oakland County Commission to vote no on a proposed increase to equalization fees charged to communities. As a disadvantaged community in Oakland County, Madison Heights cannot absorb the indirect costs being passed down by the county, which is a prorated portion of things such as the county executive administration, budget, finance costs. This is what makes up indirect costs typically. This increase will increase our cost from $221,000 or $230,600 to $410,060 and represents a 77.8% increase in the first year alone. This increase is being recommended by the Finance Committee and will be considered by the full Board of Commissioners at their May 1st meeting.
Thank you. And just to clarify, it is the Oakland County Finance Committee.
Yes.
So we asked our representative to come today from the county. She was unable, but she, we've been asked for our chairman to come, so we've got Chairman Dave Woodward here. So if there are any questions, do we want to start with questions? Or do we want to do this?
Why don't I tee this up first, to kind of explain, I mean, a couple of things, and I'll also make an introduction if I may.
Sure, please go ahead.
So I, so Dave Woodward, Chairman of the Oakland County Board of Commissioners, as well as Oakland County's Chief Financial Officer, Brian Loeffler, is here, who can go deep into the, all the components that go in determining not just these type of rates, but all the rates. I know that there were some questions specifically as it relates to how the, what the indirect costs are, how do they relate to these type of agreements, and we can talk about them at a high level or specifically as it relates to this contract, but indirect costs are assessed at all of our contracts, including our grants with the state and federal level, but all the other contracts that we have across county government, things like local law enforcement contracts, our dispatch contracts, Marine Patrol, and more. But let me specifically, high level, talk about this assessment contract, because there's language in the resolution that I have to take and some issue with that are just fundamentally inaccurate. The last time the assessment contracts, and just for those who are listening, the assessment contract is a service that Oakland County provides to local communities in a voluntary basis. It is the basis of determining the assessment of every parcel in a jurisdiction. And Oakland County provides this service to roughly half the communities. Other communities like Troy, Royal Oak, Novi, and others take on the assessment services within their own city or local government. It's an absolutely critical component that's necessary to establish what taxable value is. It is what tax rates are assessed against. It is the information that is used for a local jurisdiction to send out the regular tax bills. That gets collected, and then the municipality collects those bills, and then if people are late or default, the county also, through our Tax Delinquent Revolving Fund, puts the money forward to make certain that the local jurisdiction is fully funded at the tax rates that they are entitled to based on voter-approved millages. So what that service costs? I said already that half the communities across Oakland County use this service. The cost of providing that service is roughly $6.5 million. The amount of revenue that's been coming in from these contracts after a complete overview is, I believe, less than $4 million, 3.8 million. And so there's a massive deficit there. And again, I mean, think of it almost as an enterprise fund, that it's a service that is provided voluntarily to the communities that want to do it. And we do believe, I will stand by the team and our assessing department, there is something because of economies of scale, that there are things far above and beyond of what you can get if you went on to the private market to be able to get. And I think everyone working with Oakland County Assessing would say, yes, all the data and all the stuff that we're able to get because of the professionalism of the team and the size of the team that allows for things. Specifically here in Madison Heights, I understand we have, I mean, one of our team members, I think, is in the city a couple days a month, 12 months a year, I mean, onsite, providing extra value to the service. All of these things come with a cost. And so when we looked at what this service absolutely considered, the contracts, the current contract expires June 30th, and the last time these contracts were renewed, spelt out in resolution, I mean, as a board and communicated by resolution, that with these come up for renewal, we want to make certain that there's a uniform basis for establishing this across the organization, and as a matter of policy, making certain that all the costs associated with providing the service is captured in the cost of that service. It's unfair to ask other communities to subsidize the cost of service provided by, exclusively to another jurisdiction. Now, I realize, I mean, it's a, it's a, the cost, I wish it was free, but similarly, the cost is the cost, and Mr. Loeffler can be here, can actually break down, but it is a combination of all the labor costs that are associated with providing these contracts. It is the health care, the pension, and all the materials necessary to do that, as well as the indirect costs. And indirect, and Mr. Loeffler can go into greater detail than I can, the indirect costs that we as a county contract with MAXIMUS to determine what the indirect costs on everything are. And this is all the costs associated with delivering the service. So it would be all the HR support that's necessary to process, the dedicated staff to a specific project. It is the space and equipment that's necessary to do that. It is the associated printing and postage costs that are associated to doing it. And then when you put all that together, it generates the total costs as operation. And then Oakland County's fiscal services determine that the cost, in order to cover the costs that Oakland County is spending, that's roughly $17 and change per parcel. And so those, back in March, every jurisdiction that chooses to use the service was communicated that these contracts were coming down the pike. Every body who, we reached out and says, what's the process that's going into this, knew that, yes, indirect costs, because indirect costs is being captured in all of our contracts as a matter of practice, that the previous resolution spoke to the need for a uniform rate that covers everything, that would be applied to all of these contracts. And we went one step further, recognizing it's a significant bump in year one, and provided a mechanism to smooth out that, so decrease, defer some of the costs of year one, and put it in the back of year three to allow for a smoothing, if you will, of what the cost per year would be. As a result, based on number of parcels, Madison Heights, if they were to stay with Oakland County, has a rate, that's what it costs. And so I told this to Commissioner Ann Erickson-Golton, as well as the City Manager, that I'm happy here to come here and answer any questions that relates to this, as well as go deep into it. I brought the big guns to talk about, I mean, from our CFO, who can go into greater detail of what these things are. The one, the last thing I will say, I think is important in a matter of context, that by state law and statute, that all jurisdictions are afforded the ability to put a 1% administrative fee onto the tax bill, it's 1% of the total taxes collected. And the purpose of that money is to pay for not just the actual tax collection, but in essence, and I would argue, I mean, go to the statute, that 80% focus on, I mean, reserved to the assessing that's necessary to do that. And so if you would look at Oakland County, I mean, what Madison Heights is collecting the 1% rate, the proposed rates for the next contract are far less than 80%. As a county, we can't make money on these contracts. If we did, we'd lose our government immunity, we are not in the business of making a profit. We are in a business of fiscal responsibility to make certain that we're covering the cost. And so the opportunity costs for deferring some of the payments in year one and parking them at the back of year three is a recognition that this is a significant bump, and how can we do this together to make sure this service remains available? It is also, and I will say, there are other firms out there. I know some communities have put out RFPs, but I would be very weary, because they'll say they can do it at a certain rate. I'll point out one community, actually another municipality, answered an RFP to another municipality. Their cost for doing their own is about $45 per parcel, and they offered to do it $17 for someone else. But then be careful, because all the resources, support that's necessary to represent the assessment through a tax tribunal and all those types of things are all additional add-on costs. And like a lot of things in privatization, it might look good on the surface, but when you add up all the things that go into actually calculating the final bill at the end of the year, you could be way out of whack. And so this is not an attempt by any means to try to milk everything as possible out of an individual community. It is solely designed to set a rate at what it costs, cost us to provide our service. We have exceptional employees, we pay them at a very well compensation with good benefit packages and good retirement, and those things are part of, I mean, contribute to this. But it is also the indirect costs that are calculated by a third party that determine what that is. And so I see in the resolution, the resolution, I mean, speaks that this, I mean, comes without warning, I guess I would just say, when the last rates were adopted, it was adopted by resolution that very much directed fiscal services to come up with a uniform rate. Communities were communicated with in March 3rd that we were going through this process. Everyone knew that the contracts were expiring at the end of June, and we're here, I, we're here today, and happy to answer any questions and direct them to me or Mr. Loeffler, who can speak in greater detail of the numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward, for that explanation. We're going to hold off asking you any, asking you to speak as well. And Mr. Sherman, did you have a question or comment you wanted to make?
I do, but I think Ms. Marshall is going to proceed first.
Okay, all right, awesome. Mrs. Marsh?
I have a lot of comments, so I don't want to monopolize the conversation and want to allow City Council to ask questions. But the one that I do want to talk about, though, is just the lack of notification. You keep alluding to this March memo, which I did receive. I've read it at least 10 times since I got this notification. Nowhere in there does it talk about a significant increase. It talks about transparency, it talks about how it's going to go to the Finance Committee, it talks about standardizing contracts, which is one of the things we also talked about last year, because a lot of the contracts expired at different times, all the contracts have different rates. I thought that it was to do something similar to what we had to do last year. Nowhere in there did it allude to a 77% increase. Our budget is pretty well set, and I don't have any flexible money to spend this. I don't have a fund balance equal to what Oakland County has. I mean, Oakland County has a fund balance of over $200 million, or 45%. We struggle to pay for our policing services here and have had to eliminate four positions and at least a million dollars in capital. So we did not get any type of notice that says we're now going to be applying these indirect charges, which I feel Oakland County general obligation tax should be paying for, but that's pretty much my comment until everybody gets their questions answered. Do you want to?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Woodward, good evening, Mr. Loeffler. I would like to start with a little history as to what brings us to today. Fifteen years ago, this city had a Level 4 assessor and one of the most respected assessing departments in the county. And the city made a decision to dismantle the in-house assessing in order to use Oakland County assessing services at a tremendously reduced cost, factoring in legacy costs we had here for our employees. And the rate that they, and we've worked very well together for the last 15 years. The last time this contract was renewed, the increase was $8,000, 4% of what the contract was. It went from $221,000 a year to $230,000 a year. And now, what's being proposed, and I agree with Ms. Marsh, with lack of notice, when this council is scheduled to approve our budget two weeks from now, wants to impose an increase of 77%, which is $180,000, $180,000 increase versus the $8,000 increase between fiscal '24 and fiscal '25. And when I looked at the new contract and reviewed it and compared it to our previous contract, I couldn't believe how much of an increase was baked in to the per parcel amount. In, from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, the cost per parcel was $17.04 for real property parcels and $14.27 for personal property. This current fiscal year, it went up to $17.72, an increase of 68 cents per parcel, and an increase on the personal property parcel side from, from, from $14.27 to $14.84 a parcel, an increase of 58 cents. What's now being proposed for the first year of the new contract is initially $30.86 per parcel in the first year, $32.11 per parcel in the second year, and $33.77 in the third year. It's doubling the cost to the community. And, and I, the council in the city would like to know, what's the justification for having a 77.8% increase in the first year and a 94.7 accumulative increase in year two in this contract for providing the same services? I mean, I can make comments about how things have changed in terms of, in terms of interaction between myself and Oakland County Assessing, who I greatly respect. I think there've been some changes since Dave Hebert retired and a new director took place, but we don't have to get into that now. I just don't see how you can come in, the county can come in at this point and say that on top of what the cost is for utilizing those same services, that now there should be an increase of 78% or so in the first year and 94.7% in the second year.
Well, Mr. Sherman, if I, I mean, if I may, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Loeffler, who will explain all of that. And then I want to say that this gets to the transparency of everything, from a line item and all the costs associated with it. Mr. Loeffler is going to talk to you, take you through that.
Can Mr. Loeffler also address the fact that our, our budget is due at our next meeting, and why, when, why the county did not know that our budget was due? I'm guessing that all the cities have budgets that are due at the same time, and how the county was not aware of that, or if they were aware of it, why they chose to wait so long to let us know?
I'll adjust that first. So there was a memo that came to you on May 3rd, and part of that was the concept of the-
April 3rd?
I'm sorry?
April 3rd?
No, March 3rd was the memo that came from Assessing, with me copied on it, that said, this is the process that we're going to go through here. The, and in there, it did say that we were going to do finance on April 2nd. I spent 38 years servicing local units of government across the state. I'm very well aware about how your fiscal process works. I'm very sensitive to that. What I, what I also want to let you know is that on the Finance Committee, it said April 2nd was when we were supposed to present. I was asked by somebody that's not in this, in this room, to push it back two weeks. You know, so I'm, so there's that. And I did make that comment at the Finance Committee last week. But I also want to say, though, in terms of going back to your comment, yes, the, there are four components, and it's very detailed in this memo, or at least on the base memo that talks about the methodology of how we came up. So for transparency, first item is wages. Essentially, in the, in the assessing, in the equalization department, there's 79 employees. We gave description of the type of employee, what percentage of their time is used for assessing, and I'm going to call it that you're part of a portfolio. And as you said, there are Level 4s, there are Level 3s, there are Level 2s, there's Assessor Aides, there's a Chief of Equalization, and all these folks work on servicing you. And in that, those wages, of which then, as you, as you're well aware of, last year, the county approved a four-year agreement for the UAW, which these members are in. And in Exhibit A, it shows exactly what those wages are going to increase, those base wages each year pursuant to that contract. In addition to that, there's a base wage of what we contribute to their retirement system, so that's totally transparent. The second thing is the other things that are, in addition to wages, and as you all are aware, an employer has to pay FICA, has to play workers' comp, workers' comp. And I mean, there's a whole host, there's like 10 items that are listed in Section 2. The third thing is that we have actually, for some of the things that we have to provide for those who are, I'm going to say, in the field, boots, coats, iPads, to do their job. And there's a line item, and in that memo, I pointed everybody to page 207 of our budget book, showing here, here's the cost, then also going forward. The last items are the indirect costs, of which I essentially, I rely on the MAXIMUS folks. They go through and they break this down. And the percentage that is added, of 18%, but of their total amount, it's less than 10% of the total costs associated with the assessing contract. Also in the exhibit, or excuse me, also inside the contract, we did talk about the rates. There, and essentially, I certainly understand, a 70% increase is very difficult to swallow, given the math. So immediately, we came up with what is called, as Commissioner Woodward was saying, is the smooth, which is only a 32% increase. It's still a lot. But the point, though, is we're trying to address those concerns. So rather than being $30.86 a parcel, it's $23.77 a parcel. So that is, you can try to work through your, your budget. And that's, the other thing, too, is it's proposed to be a three-year contract. We know what the base wages are, so why don't we give you the knowledge that we have of what these, these wages are going to be in, to perform these services? In addition to that, I think one of the- In addition to that, uh, I think one of the things that I was really concerned about when I started over a year ago is the lack of uniform rate per parcel. First thing that said, that, that Mr. Loemeyer was telling me is that as soon as everybody got their contract, the local units of government were calling each other, seeing what's your rates in your contract. That's not, that's not uniform. You should be, all be treated the same. You all should know what it is. And I want to also build upon the situation is that in that contract, you'll notice that in sections, in Section 4, it's related to full tribunal services in the event that you have an appeal. The only time that we would ask that you charge is if somebody appeals it all the way up to the State Supreme Court, there would be extra hourly charges, of which we're actually telling you what that would be. You have the, the information in front of you in terms of how you would be able to budget, of whether or not you want to appeal something, there's a cost. It's the same thing if you had a lawyer on a, on another case. What's our cost of defend or pursue versus what's the possible outcome? But to do that, you need to know that information upfront, and that's one of the things that, in terms of compliance, not only with board policy, but even the resolution that was adopted in 2023 that said, "In 2023, we, there is going to be a 4% increase in '23 to '24," which you cited. And then in 2025, we have to essentially do the math and show you what that all is. So I'll be more than happy to answer your other questions or address any other concerns that you may have.
Your Honor, just a couple of quick follow-ups.
Go ahead.
First of all, in 2010, we had a case where the city of Madison Heights carried the water for every taxing authority in the state of Michigan that went to the Michigan Supreme Court regarding a special tool exemption case. And it went to the Court of Appeals twice, the Supreme Court once. We, 10 years of litigation, we carried the water there. I don't deal with 79 employees in the Oakland County Equalization Department. I deal with three: Terry Schultz, Travis Johnson, and Kimberly Hampton. And we've worked very nicely together. We haven't had a trial. We've settled cases for fair value in the, in, in all the years since that case wound its way through the Supreme Court, Dan's Corporation versus Madison Heights.
So, my comment back to you is that you, while you interface with three employees, behind the house is probably another 10 that are supporting those three that you interact with. So, and that's what, to some extent, of those 79, is that when somebody is coming out to your house and taking pictures, that, that picture goes up to the cloud. We're supporting you as a record. If there's changes, somebody has to make sure that that's all done. I'm just saying that I appreciate your comment that, yes, you're dealing with, that's the continuity, and that's one of the things we're wanting to make sure, is that there's business continuity to the-
I don't doubt they have support staff. I have support staff helping me. But when you talk about indirect costs, and the citizen should know, the indirect costs relate to charging a percentage of the Oakland County Executive's Office to the assessing department, charging human resources to the Oakland County, to, to the Oakland County Assessing Department and charging us, indirect costs that have never previously been charged before. And now, now the county wants to put it not just on us, on 30 other, 30 or so other municipalities who utilize the county for assessing services. I mean, frankly, the increase is, is not just significant, it's outrageous for the county to, to put this on the communities, and not just us, all the communities at this stage when budgets are about to be approved. Just not fair. It's not fair. And the justification that you have indirect costs, the indirect costs don't relate to assessing. That's, that's the, that's our position.
So, but your position is wrong, and here's why. If you were to, if you were to do this and go back to how Madison Heights was running its operation, the cost to have the assessing operation would include all of those indirect costs. It would include the appropriate HR, a, a cost associated for managing it. It would, it would require facilities costs, material costs, and all the things that are associated for doing the job. Madison Heights paid that indirect cost when it was in-house. Every community, the other half of the communities that do not work with Oakland County, pay the indirect cost to provide that service. The, so, to, to say that it's not associated with it, it absolutely is associated with it. And frankly, if we weren't doing it, it wouldn't be a cost that would be born.
Why was the cost not charged last year when you raised it 4%?
I, uh, if you want to go back and roll tape, you could see a lot of people, like, being incredibly frustrated that it was acknowledgement that that last, the last contract did not cover the full cost of what it cost to provide that service. And that is why going forward, and it's not just assessing, it is all the contracts. It's the law enforcement contracts, it's the dispatch contracts and everything, to ensure that the costs of those services are fully accounted for, validated by a third party. Like, a third party does the calculation that determines it and calculates a number. Fully transparent, all the numbers that go into it, that's what the cost of providing the services. We can't provide the service for less. If we could, we would, because we by law cannot make a profit on it.
Instead, you're asking us to provide less service. Should we lay off police officers? Should we cut the hours at the library? That's what you're telling this council to do.
So, I-
Take it or leave it as far as Oakland-
Mr. Sherman, I take-
I'm going to interject here.
Okay.
So, the county has been very generous, um, thank you, Gary McGilvery, for helping us with our parks and providing us numerous grants for our parks. Seeing that there is a large fund balance here, would the county be open to a grant for us and for other cities that are going to be in this same position to help us fund this?
A, I'm sorry, a plant?
A grant.
Oh, a grant.
G-R-A-N-T, a grant.
So, I, let me start by saying that as a city, the city of Madison Heights is collecting nearly $600,000, the 1% assessment that's put on everyone's property taxes. That is to cover the cost of assessment and collection of taxes. My point is, is that as a city, in every, I mean, most of jurisdictions across Oakland County are, are providing this very same assessment. The purpose of the assessment is to cover the cost of doing it. The costs of these assessment contracts are far less, far less than what you're collecting currently.
So, I'm going to actually have to interrupt you there.
The actual 1% that we collect is $600,000. You're correct about that. But it doesn't even cover our cost for collection of taxes. We have to pay for the tax software, we have to pay for the printing of the bills, the mailing of the bills, the answering of the phone calls, the waiting on the counter, the distribution of the taxes. That $600,000 doesn't even cover that. So it does not cover the equalization, and the fact that you think that we have this extra money to pay for this increase, we don't. We, and if that's the case, then maybe time would be better spent advocating for a change in the tax law to allow us to collect 1.5% to 2%, but that's just going to cost my residents more money, when what do their general obligation county tax dollars go for? And what is the money being used for that now the county is going to generate from increasing these contracts? Because I heard you say you were supplementing, I think, $2.7 million.
Right.
So now you're going to charge the real cost, so you're going to be making 6.5 or breaking even. So you're essentially going to be generating $2.7 million. So what's that money going to be used for? Because you already have this fund balance that, my goodness, if Madison Heights had a 45% fund balance, first of all, I would lower taxes. Second of all, I would be dancing a jig, because we've never had that kind of money here. We are a disadvantaged community in Oakland County, and I'm sorry, I wasn't going to talk that much. I was not going to get agitated, but you know, I'm a finance director at my core. We are a disadvantaged community, as are some of the communities. Not all of the communities that you do service for, I understand. Some of them are growing like crazy, they're thriving. Madison Heights is not. Hazel Park is not. I'm willing to bet Clausen is not, or he wouldn't have taken his free time off with his dog to come here. But this whole idea that we now have to pay this indirect cost, you're just hurting Madison Heights and our community when the whole premise of Oakland County has been stronger together. I have always been so proud to lead a community in Oakland County. I have always felt like I was a partner with you guys. I love it, and I love it. But now I feel like I'm not being heard. I feel like I'm being, you know, punished for being, using your services. We had to give up our in-house assessing because we couldn't afford it, and now you're saying you have to pay for all these indirect costs that you would have to have, even if you didn't have equalization. When I got rid of equalization, I didn't get rid of my HR department. I didn't get rid of the city manager, and that's the equivalent to your HR department and your county executive.
I'm going to dispute that, because the reason it is, is that I go through the budget season just as you right now. So, one of the things I said to the assessing group is that, look, I know what it costs, what other communities that don't use Oakland County. Novi, over $40 per parcel. Southfield, over $40 per parcel. Independent Township, $40 some dollars per parcel. Now, from my perspective, I could say to my team, we're going to have probably communities leave. I would really welcome you to go to those communities, because we could be, we could probably, at $30 per parcel, it's less. You, local units of government that don't use Oakland County, on their, looking at their ACFA or their budget divided by the number of parcels, it's information we all have, is over $33.50 per parcel. Now, in the event that, in the event that we lose communities, I got asked this question at Finance, are we going to raise our rate per parcel because we have less communities, because you have 6.5? No, we're going to have to right-size the number of people that we have. We can't, we're, we're very similar to you, like, you talk about that. And that, but we have a mechanism inside, working with the UAW, what are we going to do about those folks? Second thing, HR, if there's less employees, our, everybody's going to, it's not just a silo. I don't treat it that way. Everything is this way. So, all boats are going to rise in this tide, and all boats are going to fall when the tide falls. So I just want to make sure, I'm not here to do a money grab, as I was accused of last week. I'm not here to bust a union. This is not retaliatory to anybody. It's just math. And I, I really understand what you're trying to say. So that's why, in the contract, the proposed contract, that's why we came up with a smooth rate.
But the smoothing rate overall costs more.
No, it doesn't. If you do the math, if you take, if your parcels are fixed-
I did do the math. I think it costs more.
No, it doesn't. The rate per parcel, the number of parcels, is the number of parcels each year times the rate. The total cost over the three-year period is reduced by $7 a parcel in the first year. It's put back on the third year, no interest. The other thing, too, I want to make sure, is as you know, if you have a union contract, or your employees, they have a step increase. We're taking that risk. We take the risk of that step increase to pay higher FICA, higher retirement cost. I'm, 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 we're not going to say, oh yeah, we got to true this up. But the point was, is like, we're not asking for any additional dollars. You have two choices, there are two paths, that it remains on a uniform basis. Because I think it, it didn't, when I saw what was being presented to what you pay, I mean, there's a, I think, is it Clausen? Clausen may pay $14 a parcel or something. I mean, like, when, that, I get it. So, the math is, is the same. We're not asking you to pay any more than your parcels that you have. Now, the only thing that's in the contract to be full disclosure. If your number of parcels increased, there is more work for that. You're adding more parcels. If your number of parcels decreased, we're going to roll back the cost. I'm not going to say it's going to happen.
It's not going to happen, because we're built out and we're maxed out at our tax dollars and our billings as well.
I thought about it from your perspective. It wasn't-
Well, I can't afford $180,000 additions.
Okay, I appreciate it, but I just wanted to-
Which leads me back, which leads me back to the county offering us a grant to help pay for this.
So, we, I mean, as a matter of practice, I mean, and here's a, what this conversation is opening up, is like, who should be in the business of doing this? That I can't be fiscally responsible and run, I mean, and fund an assessment department that is in a constant deficit. So, the price is the price, and I think we need to work towards a way so that people pay what that price is. There is a, and if there's a cheaper way to do this, and I think it, it behooves any jurisdiction to look at their options, uh, and there are other options that are out there. I would, as, as Mr. Sherman said, that the reason that Madison Heights got out of the assessment department because they couldn't keep up the costs, well, those costs have just grown at an exponential rate to where we are today. It would be even more expensive to bring said, and we just look at communities that do it in-house and what their costs are. And so, working on a way to try to figure out how to deliver the most quality service to ensure that we have accurate assessments, so that that information can generate the appropriate tax bills to all the property owners to pay their fair share and be collected and to be appropriated by bodies like yours and bodies like mine and, and others, uh, that we have to come up and pay for this. And subsidizing, uh, all communities have a statutory responsibility. It's required by law. It's, it's, you must do this. And so we're trying to figure out the easiest and most affordable way to do that. And we have, I think, an option that is there. There are other options out there. But I, I mean, just as, I mean, the city manager mentioned, said that the $600,000 doesn't cover all those types of things. The contract, the, the old rate wasn't covering the cost of doing the service that is absolutely necessary and required by law. I would go a step, I, I would go one step further in saying that I would check you, I mean, and encourage the city attorney to, I mean, look at the statute authorizing the 1% fee that it explicitly talks about, that the assessing entity, whatever that is, if it's another jurisdiction, another community or whatever, that no less than 80% should be going towards that cost. And like I said, I, um, we didn't set the rate based on it being 80%. This is far less than 80% of what's being collected for the 1%. I don't disagree with you, that there probably, it probably needs to be higher to cover the full cost of doing a statutorily mandated function. But it is what it is at this moment. And math is math, and equally have a responsibility to ensure that these contracts are uniformly applied to every community and that the rates, how they're calculated is clearly spelled out and, and explained in, in granular detail, not, not just per community, but on an aggregate level. And that's, that's why I'm here, and when Commissioner Anna Erickson-Gott wasn't able to attend, I absolutely stepped up, and when the city manager called, I was absolutely stepped up. So, like, I would say that there's-
We appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Woodward, for coming out, and Mr. Lefler. Um, I know that there are students who are patiently waiting to do their presentation. Before we have a motion on this, did anyone else on council have any?
Your Honor? Uh, yes. Well, first off, hats off to the teenagers for sticking around as long as they did. Uh, I, I feel like-
Hopefully, they haven't left, and they're just getting a sit-down, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like we need to hit the room with a woo-saw or something to bring us back in. But, um, so I've, I've known, I've known Board Chairman Dave Woodward since I was a teenager, standing in rooms like these. And so, I, I know you to be kind and caring, and I know that your heart is in the right place as a public servant. And so I'm hoping that you're hearing some of the challenges that the city is going through with this, and you're listening intently to be able to bring that back, to hopefully come up with some sort of a creative solution. I know it's, it was said, it's just math. In my private life, I'm, I'm a VP in the software and SaaS startup world. Uh, I've had P and L responsibility of up to $10 million. I know it's not what we're talking about here from the county level, but I do understand that. And what I would say to our residents who are listening, this math, and we talk about this 77.4% increase, if a vendor did that to me in the private sector, not only would we have words, but they wouldn't be our vendor anymore. The problem is, this would actually be like a private equity firm who owns a percentage of our company, then charging us the increase. And that creates a big issue here, because there's kind of a conflict of interest. And to bring it home to the, to the residents themselves, imagine that you're paying rent or mortgage on your house at $1,200, which $1,200 would be a great rate in today's Madison Heights, right? That $1,200, you get a call two months before the increase, and that's going to go up 20 to 21, 28 and 80 cents. So, $2,128.80. It's just math. How do you feel about that? But you can't leave, you can't go anywhere. You don't have enough time to be able to make those decisions, so now you're just stuck with it. And that's the problem that we're living in here, because we, as a city, we plan our strategic budgeting process five years in advance. And I get that the county isn't doing that, and hopefully we can strive to do that, you know, going forward. But for us, when we're planning this five years in advance, and we're doing all the work that we can to be able to provide the best services that we can for our residents and keep those taxes as low as possible, to be hit with this 77.4% increase at the last minute, it's just, it's just not okay. And, and I know, you know, there's some anger coming out on our side of the table and yours as well, because it's a complex issue. And I'm certainly oversimplifying it. But our residents have been sitting in this room, uh, listening to this, the whole thing. And I bet you, if you polled the residents in this room, they would be wondering where all of this increase across all the communities is going to go, if it's not going to help citizens like us and cities like us.
Thank you, thank you, Pro Temblis. Um, thank you, again, for, for coming out, um-
Your Honor?
Yeah. All right, if we can really strive to make these quick comments, because we've got students.
Yeah, we need to have this conversation.
You want to go first?
No, you go ahead, I would like to have a comment.
No, no problem. All right, so, you know, one of the questions I had about this, I call, I'm going to call it a surplus, a fund balance that's at 50% right now, versus the goal, the county is really at 25% to have the, that's their general fund percentage that they like to have. So you've had this, this surplus going on, and, and that has been making up for this deficit, or is it there, you're cutting, you've been cutting other things to make up for the deficit of, of the assessing group? What was, how's the deficit being made up right now?
So, I mean, to answer your question in two ways. Like, one, we have, just like local government, the county has costs, unexpected costs, very large future projected costs, and so, the fund balance is designed and planned, it's a plan-use fund balance to be able to meet those expenditures long-term. What I don't have is $10 million to subsidize this over the next four years. Like, I know, I mean, the, the $2.5 million plus dollars that the county is subsidizing a dedicated service that's statutorily required by individual local communities to subsidize it, and it's also not fair to subsidize some when all the communities that are doing their own have to pay the full freight. And frankly, they're paying more than this to be able to do it. And so, the, so, to your question of like, and I, I heard the question, like, where's all this new revenue? It's not new revenue, it is literally covering the cost of the service, allowing us to appropriately plan-use our, all of our reserves to meet massive expenditures that are on the horizon. And I can go into, like, I mean, I got my CFO here, we can go into the county budget and what those things are, we talk about it through our normal process. But again, we can throw in the 70, I mean, percent around, I guess what I, what I want to say is that the cost associated with it is spelt out clearly, and I get that I don't like the cost. And when my homeowner's insurance came by and tapped me for another 15, well, $1,700, I had to pay that, right? I mean, it tacked it onto my mortgage, I had to adjust my payment, I called for other insurance quotes, I seemed to have the best one, I didn't like it, I don't like it, no one likes this. I certainly don't like standing up before you like this, I consider many of you my friends. But I'm also, we have to be responsible about this, this is what it costs, the, the actual cost, when you, I mean, figure out, we go, look at it, I mean, breaks out like a dollar a month, I mean, to cover the full cost of the parcel, and that's what the cost is. I can't, I can't make that number go away, because it's calculated by all the, all the components that Mr. Loeffler talked about. And I don't know how you get more transparent in that. And so, the, absorbing the risk and all step increases for salaries and not passing those on, absorbing the opportunity costs of not being able to have the $2.5 million all available upfront and spread out over the three years, those are all things that the county is willing to do, and out of the gate says, we can do this, but the cost is still the cost of providing the service. And I, and I just conclude with saying that there are, there are other options for assessing. Now, I do concern, I mean, I don't think they're going to be this level of quality. I think that a lot of the, because I've seen some of the agreements out there, I think there's a lot of hidden costs that will blow up in base-
But you've left us no other choice.
I, I, I think anybody should look at-
You're telling me that you've already decided you're going to vote on this-
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
We're wasting our time talking to you.
Mr. Councilman-
So you've left us no other choice.
Councilman Mayor, you're out of order, sorry. You're out of order. Mr. Woodward is speaking, sorry. All right. Okay, I feel like we're doing a lot of round and circles. Mr. Fleming, do you have anything other?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, I just really hope that you will take our message to your fellow commissioners, and I think that is, that the memo that came to the city in March talked about transparency, but didn't say, hey, you're going to see a 70% increase, or a 50, or anything close to what we are experiencing now, and it didn't raise the red flag for us to say, this is something you should be thinking about when you are budgeting this year, right? We started our budget in December, and, you know, we got that notice in March, but it still didn't raise those red flags, and it should have. If we're talking about transparency, we're talking about, hey, these communities, this is, math is math, we have to find this money somewhere. I get that. I've, I've had a very long career, had a lot of math done in my life, and I get, you can't, money doesn't come out of nowhere, right? You have to have that, those costs. But that memo of March 3rd, if that is the, the thing that we're pointing to, to saying the cities, you should have been prepared for this because of that memo, I think that memo should have been clearer for the cities and villages and townships that received it, to say, hey, this is going to be more than you're expecting, or could be more than expecting. I know you hadn't finished your deliberations yet, it hadn't come to that, but the flags should have been raised, because now we are at the point where we are, where we have a budget that is set, that is tight, it does not have any wiggle room. And the only thing that's going to happen is that we're going to have to pull that money out of essential services for the people of the, the city of Madison Heights, to pay for the, this also essential service. And we get, we, we understand, I think, that this, things have to get paid for. But I hope that you will take this back as, number one, too little, too late, is the message that I think that you guys need to hear, is too little, too late. Our commissioner didn't hear about this, and that the flags weren't raised for her until very recently. Our city manager, our, our finance department did not have the flags raised for them early enough, it need, it was not enough. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Mayor, did you want to speak? Did you have something?
I'm good, thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I did have a comment.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, I do want to thank you guys for coming out, because obviously, yeah, this is not, it's simple and easy are not the same. This is, it seems simple-
I promise to come with a grant next time.
Okay. But it's not, this isn't easy. It's not, uh, simple either. This is a complex issue, but I'm asking, when you guys come back and moving forward, we've, we've talked about the past, obviously, yes, Counselor Werbach is right, we started back in December to get to this point. I just ask that you provide simpler communication for our residents, and so, when they come to us, asking us, well, why didn't you know, why didn't you prepare, we can have some simpler examples, like, for example, Mayor Pro Temblis talked about your rent, that's a great example. I look at it as like, when we get our Netflix bill, and it goes up 50%, and you can't change it. Like, we need to be able to explain what's going on, because we all hate these bills as they come forward, but we need to be able to explain it to the residents so they know why we're doing it.
I appreciate the increase in rent. The context is, I do want to say, though, you know, even at, even at $32, $33 versus, say, 17, it is a doubling, the, the cost per parcel in just nominal dollars, it is, I appreciate calculating, changing that difference until such a large percentage, I understand that, but I also understand the math in terms of the total dollars per parcel. So, if you had a parcel, if you live in a home, if the cost per parcel was 18, and it's now 33, that's, that's what I want to make sure to your people that own their parcel, it's not taking their mortgage from 1,200 to plus 70%. We're not asking to, those numbers, because someone's going to say, oh, I have a mortgage of 1,000, and now you're going to cause my mortgage to go to 1,700. That's not what we're asking for, that's, so, in terms of percentage.
Your, Your Honor?
Okay, yes.
If I, if I may, just to close this out on my end, I was providing our residents an illustrative example, in the same way that Commissioner Woodward shared his insurance rates went up, so thus, his mortgage went up. The problem that I have, and that I'm sure all of the residents in this room and watching have, our government's supposed to be better. They're supposed to do better than our landlord raising our rent that much, than our mortgage company raising our rent that much, than some private company going after as much profit as possible. Our government is supposed to do better. And so, I would just ask you, at minimum, if you could go back and ensure that we have a reasonable increase for year one, something in that 5 to 15%, something that we have seen before, and we can work with, and then make this change on the back end, because government should do better. So, please, come back to us with something better.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else on council? I think everyone, okay, so, I do appreciate that you came out this evening, I do appreciate all the comments from council, I feel we've had a lot of going around and different examples for our residents. When you get your tax bill, whatever that number is that you see there, you write a check, or it goes through your mortgage, and it all comes to the city, but then, we disperse that money out. So I think that there's, that's really important, that everybody understands that, and I do have one final question for probably Mr. Loeffler, and that is, this 17, or 23, or Clausen used to be 14, is it now, with this new system, with this new rate, every single parcel will, across the county that uses these services, will be the same? Is that what this is now?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
So, whoever's contracting with the county, the rate will be the same, if they pick the initial, so, if they, if they chose the smooth-up-
There's cheap gas.
Yes, if they pick, so it's going to be the same rate for the next three years on every parcel for a community. So, as I mentioned earlier, if somebody, if a community doesn't renew their contract with the county, the rate that you see today is the same, we are taking on the risk of changing the services for everybody.
Right.
So that, that's, I want to show that to you.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. So, so whichever stream it is, it would be the same, whether it was a parcel in Hazel Park, or Clausen, or in Madison Heights, or in Rochester, or Troy, or wherever it is.
Yes, and, and that's shown, if anybody wanted to go to civic clerk on the counties, it's Exhibit B or Exhibit D, but it was shown in there, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate that. And just given, no, please, you, you may, you may have a seat, thank you. I do want to open this up to public questions, because we do have so many people in the public who pay their taxes, if there's anyone in the public who would like to speak or ask a question, please.
I have one question.
And it's apparent, it is apparent who has been patiently waiting with their student.
As, as a parent who does not come to meetings like this on purpose, but happens to be here tonight, is that how everything works? That everything in the county is equal, no matter where you live? Because that doesn't feel fair to say, hey, people in Bloomfield Hills pay the same thing as people in Hazel Park for the same service. I would assume that within a diverse group, I'm not even talking about myself, but I would just assume that in a county, Pontiac, and, right, like, that you're making accommodations for people of different incomes and communities of different incomes. You can just nod, but yes.
Thank you for your, thank you for your comment, thank you for your comment. You do not need to answer that, because you already have, that was the question that I just asked. And, and the answer was yes, that-
No. We don't, just, no.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, the-
No, no, for, for, this is specifically for equalization.
You asked about equal parcels, so-
This, this is for-
The service that Oakland County provides for tax assessment service, again, it's a voluntary, optional service that communities can opt out. So in that case, yes, everyone pays the same. But I think the question that was raised from the public, that says, well, we, we have healthcare needs that are greater here, we have infrastructure needs that are greater here, we have parks and recreation needs that are greater here-
Right.
And we certainly take an equity lens on that. But when we're talking about an enterprise, I mean-
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Woodward, thank, thank you, okay. All right, I'm going to now close, public comment again, thank you for your question. So, we were specifically talking about equalization, okay? And I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the resolution urging the Oakland County Board of Commissioners to reject the proposed increase in equalization service costs to local communities.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Second.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. I think we've had significant discussion, but is there anyone who wants to make any comments?
Your, Your Honor, I don't want to make a comment on that, I do want to say, we lost the presentation up there, so, we don't want to have to have you wait anymore, so I don't know if anybody wants to get the presentation back up on the screen, so we can go. Also, we don't have any snacks, but I do have water and some mints if you need it. I know it's been a long one.
Okay, so, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those against say no. Motion carries, this will be sent to the county. And with that, I invite the coalition to do their presentation.
Welcome.
And Mr. Woodward and Mr. Loeffler, you are more than welcome to stay and watch the presentation. Please, you're welcome to stay. You don't have to.
Hi, everyone. I just want to say, kudos to these kids for standing around. The government was going to be a short meeting tonight, so they, you know, welcome to, welcome to city government.
We did, too.
Yeah. Anyway, my name is Kimberly Heisler, I'm the Executive Director of the Madison Heights Community Coalition, and I'm going to hope that this is going to work for me next. This is our mission statement, it's a very long one, I have heard before, it's got a lot of words, so I just want to summarize it. And we work with our community, we work with several sectors in the community, all the way from parents, students, city government, police officers, we have about 15 people from different varieties of people in our community that represent the whole, we reduce substance use. We want to work with our kids, we'll tell you how we do that and what we do. It's funny, this is not working, sorry. Hey, and the most important thing that you're here, you're all here tonight, is that we want to empower these youths to make positive life choices. And who do we serve? We serve ZIP Code 48071. This is our Madison Heights leadership team. Again, my name is Kimberly Heisler, and I'd like to introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Cara Ross, I am the new youth coordinator with the coalition. I work directly with our youth wellness council, who we will be introducing shortly. I also work directly with our schools to build and maintain relationships that we have with the coalition and the schools. So I'm going to hand it back to, oh, sorry. So, up here, you'll see Nicole Fox, who's our project manager, and Jordan Aaron, actually is right here, he is our student intern and high school YWC president, and now I'll hand it back to Kimberly.
Shh, come back for a second. So we get a lot of this, you know, what does MHCC do? We've been around since 2001, I took over the coalition in 2016, and so, one of the things that we do, we collect data, and we want to share the data, which you'll hear that today. We collect data at the schools, we collect data in the community. Hopefully, some of you have seen our surveys in the community on Facebook, and you participate for that, thank you, some of the data we will be sharing today. We educate, we want to educate our community on trends when it comes to substance use, we educate our kids when it comes to trends on substance use, and also provide them with leadership training, which, again, you'll hear about. And I love this graphic, because this is what we do, we want to build up our community to just have our students rise up to be the leaders that we know that they are. And so now, I'm going to share some of the survey data, this survey data specifically is from our Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth, it is a survey that's implemented by the Michigan Department of Education and the Human Health Services, it is given every other year to 7th, 9th, and 11th graders. So I'm going to share data, two different things, I'm going to share the high school data that's combined with Madison and Lampier, and then I'm also going to compare it with Oakland County data. So this is also the past 30-day use, you can tell with the cannabis leaf, this is the marijuana data, this is the most significant trending data right now. We also have data that I can share with you at another date, in an email, I have a whole booklet for you, if you would love, that we have data when it comes to alcohol use, tobacco, vaping, and prescription drugs. So this is the past 30-day use with marijuana, again, these are the 9th and 11th graders from Lampier and Madison combined, so we know that, we ask in the past 30-day use, not we, their survey asks, which is completely anonymous, have you used marijuana in the past 30 days? You can see 11.6% of students in Madison Heights, 9th and 11th graders have said yes, compared to Oakland County rate, which is 8.6. I have those exact numbers, it's 350 students we're talking about in Madison Heights compared to 7,526 Oakland County students. The perception of risk is something that we are, look really highly at, the perception of risk, we feel, tells a better story than the 30-day use, because we know perception is reality. I like to use the speeding limit as an example when it comes to perception, for example, if my perception was I'm driving down I-70, I-70, and, and, speed limit is 70, if my perception is that I'm going to get a speeding ticket 10% of the time, there's no officers in here, I'm going to maybe speed a little bit, but if I think my perception is higher, 100% of the time, if I speed, I'm going to get a ticket, I'm not ticketing. So this is why we really look at perception of risk when it comes to the students, we ask them- We ask them what their individual perception is, what their perception of their parents' approval rating is, and what their perception of their friends is. So this is the individual perception of risk. What is your perception of risk when it comes to using marijuana? So again, this is Madison Heights. 38% of students surveyed told you using marijuana is harmful, compared to 47% of Oakland County. We only were able to attain the data from 7th graders at Page. 54% of them said, yes, we know using marijuana is harmful, compared to Oakland County 7th graders, 60.7%. We find that pretty alarming, when we, especially when we're talking about the 30-day use rate. We talked with our evaluator, we paid an evaluator $1,000 a month that we help analyze this data, and he also does Oakland County. We know that the 30-day use risk, the 30-day use, is probably a little bit tainted because they have Chromebooks that are given to them by the schools. They know that anything that they say can and will be traced back to them, which is not true when it comes to these surveys, even though they don't believe us. Perception of risk, you're not going to get in trouble for sharing that. Mental health is another one that I wanted to share with you because this is very true and exciting. It's actually not exciting data, but it's something that as a coalition, we really work strongly and feels very strongly about. There's five main mental health questions on the Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth. And the one that I want to share with you, I wanted to share the question with you. It's, have you ever felt so sad or helpless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row that they stopped doing some of your usual activities for 12 months? So for the past two weeks, have you felt, have you stopped doing some of your usual activities? So Madison Heights, 38% of them, these are 9th and 11th graders, said they, yes, we felt so upset that we stopped, so sad, compared to Oakland County. And then considered suicide? We also have attempted suicide, that's a very sensitive topic. Our schools have asked us not to share that with you. But this question, it shows that seriously considered attempting suicide was the question. Have you ever seriously considered attempting suicide? Again, our students in Madison Heights, 18%, compared to 15.6%. This is what our evaluator, he gave us this. Every system is perfectly designed to achieve exactly the results it gets. I think that speaks for itself due to time, right, and move on. So the why, so we're said, why is this? Why is our perception high? Why is, why is our perception low, actually, we should say? And so we know in Madison Heights, we have these three cannabis dispensaries. We know we have two more coming up. And so it's easy to see, they think that that means it's okay. They think, oh, that must mean it's okay, which, that's where we come in as a coalition. Because we know, we need to change their perception. We know that cannabis dispensaries are not selling to minors. We know that they will lose their license so quickly if they sell to minors. But what our minors don't know is that it's very harmful if you use marijuana at a young age. The perception data shows it. We also have our Youth Wellness Council, which we're educating and we're building them up so that, because we know, at the end of the day, if I go talk to these kids, you know, I'm just old Mrs. Heisler, these kids are cool, they are our trained agents, they're the ones who are going to be able to convince their friends in the building that using marijuana is harmful, or all the other things they're going to tell you. And we just always ask for strong ordinances, maybe a cap on the number of cannabis dispensaries, maybe some advertising limitations, that would be nice. But with that, the more exciting part of this presentation is our Youth Wellness Council, so I'd just like to move on to them.
So we would like to take this time to introduce our Youth Wellness Council, or YWC for short. So the Youth Wellness Council is a safe space for youth committed to supporting mental wellness and reducing substance misuse. Through connection, resources, and fun, we empower youth to grow, heal, and thrive together. So our key pillars are leadership, prevention, community, and mental health. So I'm now going to introduce our middle school YWC president, Chloe.
This club, the YWC, was created by a group of people that decided to come together to improve mental health in our community. At the beginning of every meeting, we do this thing called Pows and Wows, where we explain something bad that has happened to us within the past week or so, and a wow, which is something good that happened or something good we can look forward to. At all of our meetings, we also discuss things in our lives and how to deal with them and like learn from them. We also have mini like lessons to learn about mental health, to learn how to help the mental health of ourselves and others. And recently, we decided to do a bake sale to raise money for the animal shelter.
Hi, my name is Grace and I'm the Vice President of the Youth Wellness Council. As Chloe mentioned a little bit, we decided to create a bake sale to raise money for the animal shelter. In total, our costs ended up being $266 we made. We sold out of almost everything. We made sure to include allergy-friendly options like gluten-free, dairy-free, and nut-free to help cater our friends that can't eat everything that we can eat. Now, after we made our $266, the animal shelter sent us a wish list. Now, to fulfill the animal shelter's wish list, Ricky Bustler and Sally Drake both matched the cost of $266. And we can't forget about the $2 the Madison Heights Community Coalition donated to make it even $800 we donated.
While we were at Meyer shopping for the different items on the animal shelter's wish list, each person had a job to find different items. I would like to give a special thanks to our treasurer Macy and our president Chloe to help keep track of our costs. While at Meyer, we were able to buy food and treats, leashes, toys, cleaning supplies, and even a brand-new sink on the animal shelter's list. Once we took the supplies to the animal shelter, we were able to take a tour and meet some of the animals there. There were no dogs there because they had all been adopted to find their forever homes. But we were able to hang out with some of the cats, a fan favorite of which was Chaz. About a year ago, we went to the Youth Coalition Leadership Retreat, where we learned how to build our coalition, advocate for ourselves and others, and we heard and made our own stories about prevention. We participated in a little competition to make a video to address the issues that we think are important and relevant in our communities. And we decided to make a video about mental health and being a supportive friend. And we ended up winning first place and winning that trophy.
Hi, my name's Sophie. And a while back, we went to something called, and a while back, we went to something called Dialogue Day. Dialogue Day was a day where students all around Oakland County could come together and meet each other. And it started off when we heard from a speaker called Anthony Grupito. He is a magician and he's talked to us about mental health, how to manage it, and how bad it can be to turn towards substances when you're feeling overwhelmed or stressed out. Next, we broke into groups based off the stickers on our name tags. And we got to talk with all the people in our group and like discuss different topics, such as, such as community and belonging and stuff like that. And then, yes, so that's about it.
Hi, everyone, again, I'm Jordan Aaron. Something that we're looking forward to this July is an event called CADCA's Midyear 2025. Essentially, CADCA is a public service organization that strives to help youth just like them in all over the country and all over the world to help solve problems in their community. Something that we talk about at CADCA are substance misuse, bullying, suicide, teen pregnancies, and so much more. And I know that these girls are going to come back with so many more ideas on how we can improve our city from the youth perspective.
In conclusion, we have high hopes of continuing our work, in conclusion, we have high hopes of continuing our work within the community and to improve our home. Our goal is for more school engagement, community outreach, and fundraisers for local charities. Our dream is to make a community center where youth can gather in a safe, clean, and healthy place for high schoolers and college students to build and work community and also work on school assignments.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. We are excited that we're sending six students to CADCA this summer, so watch out because I know that these kids, we have, they're 8th graders. And Jordan will be a senior next year. We have Austin on the end, who is a 7th grader. He was here, he was sick, but he's excited to be here. And I know these kids are going to do amazing things, not only for themselves, but for this community. Thank you for a loving behavior.
So on behalf of council, I want to thank you guys. Everything you said was wonderful, you're amazing students. And I have to say personally, I knew so many of you as younger siblings of my kids' friends. And just to see the great young adults that you are turning into, you should be proud. Your parents should be proud as well. So all the parents who sat through this as well, I appreciate those. But you guys are great, and I can't wait to hear how CADCA goes. And you are welcome to stay, we're almost done. But if you would like to leave, that's okay too. I understand that some of you might be going on the Washington trip tomorrow morning. So if you're going, have a safe trip.
Thank you all so much for hanging in there.
All right, and I'm going to start our closing comments, starting with Councilman Mear.
Yes, Your Honor. Fantastic night tonight, a lot of wonderful things going on in the consent agenda. Okay, the Oakland County conversation was a little, a little emotional. And I apologize for jumping in there. But again, the rest of the stuff, fantastic. Older Michigan Resolution Day hits very close to home. Councilman Saltus, good luck with your trip to Lansing. I really wanted to try and make it, but yet again, I have another surgery scheduled for the 7th, so won't be able to join you again this year, but I'm going to catch up to you one of these days. So good luck with that. Let's see, the, a week from today, at the library, in the Maker's Room, they're making picture frame pendants. So that's fun stuff coming up there. On Wednesday, the 7th, is the movie matinee, which is A Man Called Otto, very good movie. Library is closed on the 9th for staff training. And on the 17th, Friends of the Library is having their book sale. So talking about combining events together. You all can come out, hang out at Little League Opening Day, and then head over to the library for the book sale. Good stuff there. And I did have a couple of other comments, but I've lost some of them now. In effort of time, I'll move on to Mayor Protemblis.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protemblis.
Yes, Your Honor. Well, first, if anybody's watching this on the, on the livestream, thank you for bearing with us on this one. Heightened emotions, a lot going on. And I, I would urge you, if you're as passionate about this increase coming down from Oakland County as we are up here, please send an email to our county commissioner, Anne Erickson-Galt. Send an email to Dave Woodward. Like, send those messages out. Do that, do that tonight before you forget, it's important. If they hear from our residents that our residents are also equally as frustrated that this came down with such short notice, they might listen. Because I don't know that they listen to us in this room, so your help might be needed. I want to highlight the Arts Board event. One short night, Broadway Dance Party for Good. Tickets are still available, that is May 16th at 6:00 PM. You can buy your tickets, $60, and it includes dinner that night. So really, really great opportunity to help support all the work that the Arts Board does. And have a great night out. There's not too many opportunities, and I say this, you know, going, I'm not at the 20 years of marriage yet, as Councilor Erbach is, but I'm coming in close. And there's not a lot of opportunity, once you pass wedding season, there's not a lot of opportunity to get dressed up and go out with your significant other, have dinner, and have that party where there's a DJ and it's, I don't know. You don't get that many opportunities. And so take advantage of it here. $60 tickets includes dinner, you don't want to miss it. And then the other thing I want to talk about, I've been back and forth with our DPS director, Sean Ballantyne, who's been phenomenal in trying to get me some information about the potential trash contract coming up. And we've had some good dialogue, and the one thing that I can't wrap my head around, and I wanted to make sure that I said it in a public forum, is the fact that this giant was like 96-gallon trash can. Some of our seniors and residents with disabilities will have a hard time bringing that to the curb, especially with some of the narrow driveways that we have. I've had conversations with a handful of my neighbors, who typically, they just bring their one bag of trash out with 15 minutes. But like, they hear the trucks and they'll bring out the one bag of trash, set it out, and it gets picked up. And so I love the cost savings, I really, you know, we spent a half a million dollars on buying these carts. I'd love to see the return on investment for that. And so if we can get this, I think it's like $170,000 savings on the annual contract. If we can get that, the payback period for that half a million cuts way down. But progress isn't progress if it doesn't have empathy included in it. And so I know we can't do two tiers of carts. I asked, can we do 30-gallon carts as an option for residents who prefer that? That got turned down. And, you know, I know we're adding in an assistance option into this where for $15 a month, our residents can have, you know, the trash company take the trash and put it out to the curb for you. But I'm still having a hard time wrapping my head around charging our residents who are, you know, struggling as, as they are today, charging them because now we've put a 96-gallon, that 30-pound trash can that they now have to navigate out to the curb. And so I, I understand that there's a lot of pros and cons, and I'm not necessarily saying that I'm voting against it. But I'm just urging staff to look into options. It's a huge and significant savings if we can take some of it or some changes in code, or, you know, or whatever we can do to be able to allow those residents, it's probably like 100, 200 across the entire city. How do we allow them to have the least pain as possible with this massive change of going to carts only? And, you know, I'm hoping that we can find a good answer to that. If not, you know, I, I won't be able to support it, but I'd love to be able to support it. And so I'm just hopeful that we can come up with a solution. And if you are watching this and, you know, if you're a resident who is older or has a disability and would struggle to take that trash can out to the curb around your car in those narrow driveways that most of the city has, please, please reach out. I think it's important that we have the discussion before we vote. And this is definitely going to be an element that I will be bringing up. So that's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ray.
Thank you. I just wanted to just touch back on the assessments that we were talking about earlier and to reemphasize the point. I would hope that going forward, we just remind the county to have more frequent communication. That is, my point was saying simple and easy, simple or easy is, I think the communication sounds like it's been oversimplified, but it just needs to be easier to understand in terms of what they present and the frequency. So we're, excuse me, so we're aware, and so our residents, more importantly. so we're, excuse me, so we're aware, and so our residents, more importantly, are aware of what they're going to be charged, so if we could just pass that note to them, that would be fantastic. Last Saturday, I got the privilege of struggling through the city's 5K for the health of it. I didn't meddle, but I didn't have a heart attack, so I call that a win. It was a good event, so I just want to thank our Parks and Rec staff for doing a fantastic job and putting that on, and making it feel like everyone was invited and included in that event. It was, it was pretty good, and I wanted to also say, congrats to our friends at Ken Young for their ribbon cutting. It was like, they had a ribbon cutting two Saturdays ago, and there was over 5,000-plus people there, it was fantastic to see, so congrats to them, and it also filled that hole where a big box store was supposed to go, so I'd encourage everyone to go check that out. They have live crabs, like, not, you know, in a tank, they have them like in a big bucket area, and it was cool to take my daughters there, because they were like, wait, are they alive? And I was like, yeah, they are alive. So, it's a cool experience, cool to see. Finally, I'll just let you guys know that the HRC is having a Lantern Festival on May 31st, so I want to encourage everyone to attend. So, other than that, just, to the point about the trash and in general, I just want to remind everyone to just remember to be considerate and kind in our neighborhoods. We are what makes this a great community, our actions to each other, helping our neighbor take out their trash, making sure you pick up your dog's poop. In some neighborhoods, I've seen that some folks walk their dog without a leash, and not only is that not allowed, it's not safe, and I know that your dog is a friendly dog, but it only takes one time, and I'm a person, I have a doodle, and he's smart, but he's slow sometimes, you know? I don't know if he gets it from me, but, but, well, Mark, you didn't have to agree with that part. But my point is, is responsible pet ownership is recognizing that, you know, your dogs can get excited, just like we can get excited. When I thought the Lions were going to go to the Super Bowl, I was elated, and then when I saw that, you know, they couldn't catch a cold in winter, I was sad, and our pets are the same way. So, just remember to be considerate of our neighbors, and that we are the ones that make this a great community by looking out for each other and being considerate. So, with that, I'll defer to Larry.
Mr. Sherman?
Nothing further this evening, Your Honor, thank you.
Mrs. Marsh?
I have two comments, both related to the equalization contract. First of all, the $170,000 that Mark alluded to isn't found money in the budget, that can cover this $170,000 from equalization, unfortunately. But the second thing is, and I just want to make sure that the residents are aware of this, as our council, Mr. Woodward, or Commissioner Woodward alluded to the fact that there are other companies that do this, there are. I immediately have been on the phone with them, I have meetings set up with one today, I have one on Wednesday, I have one at the end of the week. They are viable options, I don't know what the cost is going to be yet, but I, it is my plan to be bringing one of those back to city council, so I don't want anybody to be shocked when you see that. Oakland County is not the only option for this. I feel the service is not as good. I called, as did the finance director, helped me, and we called the majority of municipalities that these private companies service. They have better services, more robust services than we have here, so anyway, look forward to that. I just don't want the residents or city council to think that we're just accepting this, because I'm not, I am leading the charge for three other communities in the area, and plan on bringing back some kind of solution, other than just saying, okay, because unless they come back with a discount, which it's a done deal from what I understand here today, I'm not recommending the council to renew that contract.
All right, thank you. Quick office?
The early voting is currently ongoing now for the Lanfor special election, daily from 8:30 to 4:30 at the Royal Oak Senior Center, with the exception of Thursday, when the hours will be from 12 noon to 8:00 PM. And Election Day precincts 5 through 9 will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, that's for Lanfor School District only, and if you're in need of absentee ballot, you can come to the city clerk's office or call us, and we will also be open the Saturday from 8 to 4, and you can get absentee ballot up to Monday at 4 o'clock on May 5th.
Thank you. Councilor Erbach?
Just a couple real quick things, because I won't be here in May, and we are going to be voting on a lot of important things in May, and I'm very upset about that. I explained it last week, I'm going out of town for work and for vacation, so it just happened to line up wrong with May. But, so, but I wanted to make this comment, Councilman Bliss said he was worried about the trash carts for seniors. I think if he had come to any of the public comment sessions, there would have been, you would have heard, there were a lot of seniors there that were talking about, they had those questions, this is hard, this is heavy, but we had carts there, and then they tried those carts, and they realized, oh, this is easier than my cart, this is easier than what I have. A lot of those seniors said, you know what, yeah, I use one bag a week, and so you know what I don't do? Take out my trash every week. They put that one bag into their big old bin, and they, and they don't have to take out their carts every week, and those lids stay on really well, and they prevent rodents and raccoons and all kinds of problems, trash bags being ripped open, strewn about the streets. There are some enormous benefits to seniors and everyone in the city with the carts that are being proposed, and modifications are possible, but also, change is hard and a little bit scary for everybody. But I know the seniors that spoke at the meetings, and others that I have spoken to have really indicated that when they have purchased those carts on their own, they started using them, and they realized just how easy and more convenient it has been for them, so just want to make that really clear. It is, I do not believe it's going to be a significant burden on our seniors and people with disabilities, it has proven very often to be the opposite, in fact, so I just want to make sure that you see that and hear that as well. The, and then the fact that getting going to carts only is potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars of savings for the city, which we need, especially after this conversation night. Secondly, I want to just note that the Environmental Citizens Committee, as many people know, have been doing native plant sales for several years now. We have our next native plant sale on May 25th, right out here in the parking lot at City Hall, that's the Sunday before Memorial Day, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. You can come out, purchase native plants to plant in your own personal gardens, they're at, they're at good prices, and they benefit the Environmental Citizens Committee. Environmental Citizens Committee then uses those funds to do various projects, including giving out garden grants. Last Saturday, at the 5K, we celebrated Arbor Day as members of the, as Tree City USA City, we always have to celebrate Arbor Day, so we went to the 5K, celebrated Arbor Day, and announced 11 garden grants. Two went to middle schools in our city, Wilkinson and Page Middle School, teachers there both applied for grants, and they each received $1,222 to work on native garden projects that they have in, at those middle schools, that involve students and some really wonderful things. The other nine grants went $200 to nine residents who proposed native garden projects on their own properties, and they span from big, very big projects that this is going to cover a small portion of, to small projects that this might cover the most of it. So, we were happy to give those grants out, and every time we do one of these plant sales, we're able to replenish that fund that we can continue to give these garden grants out, and I think we will increase those year over year in the coming years to encourage planting native plants that encourage pollinators, and healthier trees, healthier air, water, and all the things that we need here in our city. That's all I have tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Fleming?
Sure. I know the last meeting, about a couple meetings ago, I talked about how I wanted to see, kind of like how we had the trash talk, that we'd have a session or something like that, for disabled persons and those with, you know, their family members who are disabled, to have some ideas that we could brainstorm for the recreation and programs and stuff like that in the parks. So, now I've heard, now that the Recreation Master Plan Sessions will also include one session that has, that is focused on disabled persons and those family members who have disabled family members and around that kind of topics, and I'm really happy to hear that. Second, I want to say that I really am pleased with the resolution that passed. I know when I first heard about this increase, I did ask city manager that we have a resolution. It was presented, and it passed 7 to 0, which is a strong message to the county, that we really need to be, you know, not being overcharged, I call it overcharging, that's my, I don't, you know, that's, I'm not going to go into a big brand about it, but I'm really happy about our council approving that resolution and sending it forward to the county, gives a strong message to them. Also, I want to thank for the staff who went to the county finance committee meeting, and also for the staff that, all the time, that they're always defending our city against increases, for instance, from Gleywa, or DTE, or now the county, or this, you know, George Coon Drain, whatever it is that we're being charged, something that we feel is erroneous or that is over, you know, over the top, that we're always making sure that our residents are getting the best, you know, and we're being defended by our staff. Also, a couple other things, this, I want to encourage all the public to have input and participation from everyone. I know that the trash contract is coming up, and that's, I'd like to see a lot of people here at the meeting giving their inputs to the trash contract. You know, I know a lot of people have these discussions online, I like to see them actually happening here in the council chambers. You can send an email, you can call your council members, you can send an email to the, our clerk, and there's lots of avenues for communications, but I think the most important is that you show up to a meeting and you voice your concern directly to all seven of us at one time. And finally, I want to talk about the co-responder program. I really feel that the co-responder program is a really great asset that we have, it's doing a lot of work, I think it was like 600 and something referrals that we had in the first quarter, which is a lot, you know, but I think that also we need to make sure that we follow up and see if those referrals are actually being followed through by those individuals. I don't think, I don't, it's not my opinion that we should force people to go get mental health, help, it's not a constitutional thing, but I believe that we should try to see if they can get further help, and find out if we can further improve in making sure they have transportation to those, you know, mental, you know, the doctors, or the, you know, facilities, or whoever's helping them out, you know, with getting help, and making sure that they can get the help that they need, so, that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Saltus?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, yeah, the, May 7th, we're going to Lansing again, I think it's, how many, 15 times we've gone, but it looks like we're going to have to put a surcharge for the seniors, about $50, because we can't afford it otherwise? No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. That's how ridiculous it sounds. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we do a lot of different things with council, you know, we just had the, you know, as a city, our biggest job is making sure that our trash is picked up, and that our emergency services are properly staffed, have the proper equipment, you know, and all the resources they need, and that their support services are there, that their support staff is there, and everything else we do is basically extra, and our biggest job as mayor and as council is to manage our funds, which is mainly the tax dollars that we receive from property taxes. And like anyone who does a good budget, you make sure that you have the money to pay for the things that you need, and then you look at the things that you want, and I think that we all understand that expenses are going up. Has anyone looked at your grocery bill lately? You know, I mean, everyone knows this, a couple of years ago, we did increases for our staff, because we recognized that if we wanted to maintain good staff, just as our expenses were going up, so were theirs, and so, we did raises. And so, I think that we all understand that. The issue is the rate of the increase and the way that we were notified, and, you know, I do want to thank our staff that went to the finance committee to talk about this, and tonight got a bit emotional for some people, and I think that the emotion that you heard is because some of us have actually spent the last week dealing with this, and, you know, I had multiple conversations with staff, with other members of council, I actually spoke with Dave Woodward last week, one-on-one, about this, and, you know, that's us fighting for you, that's city manager Marsh fighting for you, and she was so overwhelmed with that tonight that she forgot to make her grand announcement.
The pickleball courts are finished, and I've been dying to tell everybody, and I forgot. Forgot. We still need to put up windshields, and we need to put up paddle racks, but I went there today, and there were already four people playing, and it was just finished this morning, and there was a guy in the parking lot that took the time to tell me he had been dreaming of this, and he was waiting on people to show up to play with him. If I hadn't had a council meeting, I would be there.
We don't have that yet.
Hopefully, on May the 18th, so I expect you to be there. I'm going to teach you how to play, and you're going to be a pickleball addict.
So, 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 yeah, so, I mean, this has just been, this equalization has just really taken a lot, a lot from some of us, we've spent a lot of time working on this, coming up with different ideas, just bouncing ideas amongst ourselves, trying to come up with something, and I do appreciate the students that sat through this. I also want to recognize that tonight, we did a resolution for, a fundraiser for Kevin's Song, and that the coalition also was speaking about suicide, and the representative for Kevin's Song has sat through this entire meeting, and I would just like to ask her if she would like to take a moment, I know what it is, but would you like to take a moment to tell everyone what it is, or no?
Sure.
Oh, if you want to just go up to the podium, just give yourself like a minute or two. You've been so patient sitting through all of this, I want to give you that opportunity.
Yeah, I'm Jennifer Margrath, and the executive director of Kevin's Song, and thank you for allowing me to sit in, I actually find city council meetings fascinating, because they help you find out about the community and the people that we're serving. Kevin's Song was funded in 2013 when John and Gail Ursos' son Kevin died by suicide at the age of 41. We have recently relocated the business to Madison Heights, because we serve the 17, or the seven counties of southeast Michigan, and we wanted to be more centralized to the communities that we are serving, and Kevin's Song presents the largest conference annually in the state of Michigan on suicide. The state, the universities all send their people, we have a school summit, a clinician day, and a survivor day. So, by your granting us the ability to have the gaming license, that will allow us at our, at our starry, starry night annual fundraiser, as well as our smaller events, to obtain raffle licenses from the state of Michigan, so that we are able to fund a quarter of a million-dollar conference annually, so thank you very, very much.
All right, thank you. And just as a personal note, many people know this, my father was bipolar, not that we talked about it back then, because it wasn't something you talked about, but I grew up with a suicidal parent, so I know how important the support is, so I appreciate everything that you and your group does. I think one of the things that's come out of tonight has been that going forward, we need to have more frequent communication with the county. I don't know how we go about that, but having the county, if we can get some kind of representative from there, sending us updates or something, so that we're not blindsided like this, again, that would be, that would be really great if we could do that. I don't know how to do that, I do appreciate that Mr. Woodward and Mr. Loeffler did come, they were given very short notice. I asked Mrs. Marsh on, I think, Friday, if she could, if she could get a representative here, so it's great that they came, but it shouldn't have come down to this, like, this all should have been taken care of before. I just want to echo a couple of things that Councilor Wright said, 5K was this weekend, and to me, that's always a great way to signal that spring is here and summer is coming. I know a lot of people who use that as their first 5K of the year. For some reason, this year, it didn't rain, it was very, very confusing to me that there was no rain, but it was cold. So, thank you to everyone who participated in that, thank you to Ricky Buesler and the other sponsors, they had some really great shirts going there, so I really appreciate that. And then, with the ribbon cutting of Kim Young, so that was the little 5,000-square-foot grocery store at 13 into Quinder that was literally bursting at the seams. store at 13 and Dequender that was literally bursting at the seams, and they moved in over to John R., just by 12 Mile, and they went from 5,000 to 25,000. It is huge, it's huge. It was, it was a great opening, and the owner just kept saying to me, we couldn't have done this without the support of the city, we couldn't have done it without the support of the city. So, you know, for me, it was great to see, to see that, you know, here we have one of these small entrepreneurs, a family business, that was able to grow, and we were able to keep them here. And when I, when I welcomed her, I said, you know, in your new home, in your home of Madison Heights, you know? So it's really great. And, yeah, there's lots of people, and they had, you know, the lion dance, and a lot of other, you know, a lot of other little niche things that were going on, including the firecrackers that were way too smoky for me, but it was still very cool. I appreciate everyone who sat through this. At our next meeting, which is going to be May 12th, we are going to be approving our budget, so we've been talking about that for, I think, yeah, for probably about six months now, went over it the last meeting. Want to thank Mayor Pro Temblis for chairing the meeting, I was not well that week, I was pretty much out for the whole week, so I appreciate that he was able to take over for that. And I'm going to adjourn this meeting, the time is 9:18. Thank you, and good night.